Welcome all of you that came. Stan's question, "Legion." I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Here we have a motion in order to adopt the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, do we have public comment tonight?
No, we do not.
Um. I need a motion then to for consent to the agenda. Are there any questions?
I have any questions?
Deanna, Deanna had a question. Deanna, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
You had a suggestion about the enrollment report about offering some headers. Can you tell me how, what you would like to see on that or how that might help?
I'm trying to pull it up, sorry.
I didn't catch that, Deanna. What'd you say? Just try to pull it up.
Yeah, I apologize. Um. If you don't mind clicking into it, maybe it'll be faster if I just follow your screen.
There you go.
Thank you, yes. Um, it just, it wasn't very, it's not very clear, at least for me. I don't know if other people would agree. Um, like, you, yes, you could see like the, the rows, but I'm not really sure what the, the columns signify specifically. So if there's any way we can...
That's a total student count. When you see those numbers, that's the total FTE that we have in that building, but I think you can probably modify that report to make it a little bit more clear. Certainly, and it's the number five.
So looking like at that George K, the sixteen and six, how, how would you, what does that mean?
That is a class and a half, so they have a total of, of twenty-two kinders, so that's each class.
I see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know.
So one class has sixteen, and one kid, class has six?
Yes, it's this first grade split, correct. It's a K-one split, so that's six kiddos are in a first grade class because their first grade numbers are fairly low, too. So you see thirteen there. At first, the six are incorporated into that, that thirteen.
Okay.
So it's a K-one split.
Got it.
Yep. Be right, that is not very clear. So I think, yeah, let's catch our head on that, Deanna, and we'll try to clear that up.
Okay, that was it for the consent agenda, thank you.
You bet.
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thanks. And moving to the second agenda, we adopt the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody first? Okay.
Can I just bring one attention to the board with the cross-country team is here. I think we can do, you know, later date, probably a special recognition for you, but they have a field trip to Boise and it is a invitational uh, field trip, sorry, an invitational cross-country meet, but they have to qualify for this meet in Boise. And it's a, we've never had athletes qualify.
Oh, wow.
It's Boise invitational. Um, one of our student athletes, uh, please remind me of your name that just broke our school record.
Oh, hundred.
A hundred just broke our school record. Uh, six, was it twice?
You broke it twice.
It wasn't enough in one year? So it was under seventeen minutes for a five day, which is just blazing. Um, and then Mr. Esparza, please, you personally, please remind me your first name. What?
Sergio.
Sergio Esparza, that's right. And what, what is, what's your PR this year?
Well, seventeen oh five.
Which is so close to boy breaking that.
A five K?
A five K.
What's that equivalent per, per mile?
What's your splits?
Average five twenty-five. Five eleven.
So just, just thank you so much for your guys' hard work. We wish you nothing but the best. And then maybe when you come back from Boise, we'll have you come back, come and maybe give a, a report to the board on how it went.
Yes.
Yeah, we're so proud of you guys.
Congratulations, that's awesome. Way to represent.
Yes.
Hey.
Main attraction.
Oh, yes. We will now put in our newly elected board member and our newly elected student representative. I'm not here to take their oath one at a time. Casey, you'll go first.
I'm going to take it to church. And if family wants to come and stand with them as he's taking his oath, be more than welcome to do that, too.
Please raise your hand. Please repeat after me. I, Casey King.
I, Casey King.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform in this charge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the school district number one forty-four, district number one.
Of the school district number one forty-four.
District number one.
District number one.
Uh, for the remaining of the term.
For the remaining of the term.
Ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Alright, that's great. Thank you.
Casey.
Lucina. Please raise your hand. I repeat after me. I am Lucina Valenzuela. Uh, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully execute.
I do solemnly affirm.
I will faithfully execute.
Thou art faithfully executed.
The duties of a school board member for the Quincy School District.
The duties of a student board member for the Quincy School District.
Uphold the responsibilities entrusted to me.
Uphold the responsibilities entrusted to me.
And act in the best interests of my fellow students. I pledge to, one, advocate the concerns and, and interests of the student body.
And so, one, advocate the concerns and interests of the student body.
Second, to listen attentively to the voices of my peers and represent them accordingly.
Second, to listen attentively to the voices of my peers and represent them accordingly.
Third, collaborate with fellow board members.
For to collaborate with fellow board members.
Administrator, administrators and faculty to promote positive change with our school community.
Administrators and administrators and faculty to promote positive change within our school.
And fourth, uphold the values of integrity, inclusivity and respect in all my endeavors.
And fourth, uphold the values of integrity, inclusivity and respect in all my endeavors.
I recognize the importance of this role.
I recognize the importance of this role.
And pledge to fulfill my duties to the best of my abilities.
To pledge to fulfill my duties to the best of my abilities.
Fostering an environment that supports learning, growth and uniting with our students.
Hey. Now in bar, the Monument's glowy party?
Thanks, thanks for having us. Still waiting for that. Okay, so we do have my number, right? What are your problems? Yep. It's, uh.
Alright, um. Thank you, uh, members of the board for coming to Monument and visiting us today. Congratulations to Casey and, uh, Liliana.
Lucina.
Lucina, thank you for your new board positions. Um, I am excited to talk to you about a lot of the amazing things that we have going on here at Monument, uh, this year. I, everybody got a, a board report here. Um, on the left-hand side of that, it's just our demographics and what our enrollment is. And we've had two hundred and seventy-two about the time that we put this together. We're actually up to two hundred and eighty-eight. Um, we have two, uh, we added sixteen transitional kindergarten's that were four and five years old. Um, and so we're up to two eighty-eight, which is, uh, right about where we've been sitting for the last several years. Even though we've had many houses built in our backyard here, uh, we're not seeing the, the new students that we thought we, that would come with that. So, um, we've been holding pretty steady around that, uh, two eighty, two ninety mark for, uh, four out of the five years that I've been here. Um, when we put together our SIP, our School Improvement Plan goals, uh, we did a, what we call a comprehensive needs assessment, where we sat down and looked at all of our data to identify what were we doing well, where did we need to grow, um, and in what direction that we would like to do that. When we do that, we sit down and we look at our strategic plan and we align all of our goals with our district strategic plan. And it was, uh, very, it was awesome. Yesterday, we were at a, a training at the E S D. And we talked about, uh, we have a social emotional learning goal. And it was a social emotional learning, uh, training, and they talked about, well, why do you guys have a, a social emotional goal? And we said, well, actually, our district has a strategic plan. One of the requirements of that strategic plan is to have a goal. And so you can see that continuity from the top, uh, the board and the strategic plan all the way down to our students benefiting from the goal. So, um, we were really excited to present that. The, the presenter was really excited to hear about it, that we have that support from the board, from the district office, all the way it's down to the students. So our strategic goal this year is students will be able to manage their own behaviors and solve their problems while maintaining respect for others. In doing so, they will reduce the number of reported behaviors in unstructured settings, which we consider to be the playground, cafeteria, um, hallways, things like that, um, by at least twenty-five percent, um, as measured by Swiss referrals. Swiss is our reporting system. Anytime a student has a behavior, um, that does not meet the guidelines or the expectations, we do a referral for it. Um, those referrals result in a lot of different things. Um, some of it is a traditional disciplinary action. Maybe they miss a recess or something. Most of it actually is a teachable action. We assume when a student is not following expectations or the guidelines, it's because they need to be taught to behave and meet the guidelines. And so that is, uh, our teachable action. We typically sit down with them, discuss what are the guidelines, what are the expectations? Where do they, uh, need support in meeting them? And our dean of students who's here tonight, Rochelle Peridge, um, and our, uh, new counselor, Molly Carlson, uh, do an awesome job of sitting down with those students and saying, uh, what, what is needed to help meet the guidelines? And because we're teachers, we teach, right? We're not disciplinarians. We were forced to be disciplinarians on occasion, but ultimately, we want to teach these behaviors. Um, we do that through two strategies. Um, the first one is training our staff in how to create inclusive and predictable environments on the meets and needs, unique needs of all students. We know that if we're gonna have these behaviors and we're gonna present them as opposed to react to them, we need to, first of all, teach our staff and how we're gonna teach the kids about the behavior that we need to see. We need to teach the staff to create a predictable and inclusive environment. How are all kids gonna feel like they belong at Monument Elementary? How are we gonna include them in everything that we do? And then how do we do that in a predictable manner, so that when they show up to school every day, regardless of the chaos that they have at home, regardless of what goes on before they get here, they know what to expect when they walk through the doors. They know they're gonna belong, they know they're gonna feel included, and ideally, we want them happy to be here. So getting them here is the first step. Um, having our teachers knowing how to create that environment is, uh, the first thing that we do within the first three minutes of students walking in to Monument, uh, that they know that they're in a safe place, that they're happy to be here. We're happy to have them here. Um, the other part that we need to, uh, we trained our staff in how to safely and appropriately address student behavior. Um, we are, because of our inclusivity, we're seeing all sorts of new behaviors that we don't historically have not seen from our students. Um, we are seeing several issues when it comes to mental health. We're seeing issues when it comes to, uh, things that are typically handled in the home, like, uh, potty training and diapering. Um, we're having kids that are coming attached to, uh, devices. I know a lot of the things that are going on at the middle school and high school to, uh, rectify that. Um, and so our staff asked for this training and how to address these behaviors. And so we worked with the E S D to bring in a, a behavior consultant named Abe Bray. Uh, we brought in, and Dr. Angela Brooks, who works on restorative practices. And then we also worked with the, someone from the Association of Washington Student Leaders. His name was James Lehman, and he actually taught our classified staff, how do we conduct recesses that are productive for kids, that are safe and predictable? Um, and if there are conflicts out there, and there always are, our current conflict of, uh, de jour is four-square. And you would not believe how many conversations I've had about four-square and whether or not the ball hits the line and what do you do? And how do you move on from that? Um, and, but this was addressed in actually the training that we had, so it's great. We're excited to have it. We used the Swiss referral data to track that. Um, last year, we had a hundred and twenty-three referrals in those areas. Uh, this year, we are, and we averaged about two per day through September and October. This year, we're averaging at point six per day. So, you know, we've cut that, uh, by two-thirds. Our next goal is number two, and so we have a, a, a goal to address, uh, ELA and reading, and then another goal to address math. And so our goal number two is to address our reading. And what we wanted to do is we wanted our students to move into the typical or high-growth. And what we talk about is student growth percentiles. If you line a hundred kids up and you give each one a number, each one represent a percentile. We want all of our students above fifty percent. Fifty percent is half the kids in that group, and we want them to be typical growth is above that fifty percent. We want them in typical or high-growth. Last year, we had a very similar one where we had a rote number of cutting our numbers of low-growth in half. We met that. So this year, we aimed a little bit higher. We want all of our students to be in the high-growth percentile. Specifically, our students receiving special education services and our students receiving multilingual services. And so, as you can see, last year, our largest groups of growth were in the high-growth. Our students receiving sped services represented the forty-six percent of them. Um, we're in the high-growth. Our multilingual learners, forty-three percent, were in the high-growth. Our total students, we're at forty-six percent, we're in the high-growth. So forty-six percent of our students learned more than what would typically be learned in a calendar year, which is awesome. Um, we can take that and actually build on it this year and get up to that eighty percentile, which is what we want to do. So that's our goal number two. Um, our strategies for that on the backside are, we're in our professional learning communities. We're gonna look at the data and see how they're performing and make adjustments before we get to the quarter and see the grades, right? And so on a weekly basis, our staff sit down in groups, they look at how the kids are doing, and then they make adjustments based on what they're seeing. We're not gonna wait for the first quarter to end and then have, uh, a certain, you know, we're, at that point, we'll have seventy-five percent of the school year left. You know, we're gonna do it every week, make adjustments every week as necessary to make sure we're meeting our students' needs. The other thing that we're gonna work, work on is our foundational language and literacy strategies. We want to make sure that we start from the ground up, build solid foundation of language and literacy. That way, we know each grade moving on, our students are able to, uh, decode, they're able to recognize letters and letter sounds, and that they're able to, uh, read at, at whatever grade level they're at as a foundation. We start from there and then we can build on top of that. Um, and so those are our two strategies for the reading. Our math goal is very similar. Um, in, instead of the eighty percent, um, uh, for both our groups, we want eighty percent student growth in the high or typical, uh, percentiles for multilingual learners. And then we want our, or sorry, for students receiving special education. And then for our multilingual learners, we actually bumped that up to eighty-five percent. And we actually had pretty good numbers in this and math as well. Of each category, our highest group came in the high-growth area for sped. Um, it was forty-two percent. For multilingual, it was forty-seven percent. And then our student, um, high-growth is at thirty-four percent, a little bit lower than the reading. Um, but that matched a lot of the other data that we're looking at for student performance in math. Um, but that still was our high group. So we're excited about that. We're proud of that, and we are, uh, gonna build on that. Again, our strategies are gonna be, we're gonna sit down in our professional learning communities and see how the kids are doing on a weekly basis. We're not gonna wait for the quarter to get here before we make those changes. Um, same thing there. The second strategy that we're gonna do is we're actually gonna sit down with our math instructional coach and our English language development specialist that work on how we can structure our units and our lessons to meet the needs of those specific groups. We know that we're not leaving anybody out when we do that, because we have multiple, uh, strategies that we're gonna use that benefit the entire class. So that is gonna be something, a rising tide lifts all boats sort of strategy. But, uh, uh, the focal point will be on those two student groups. Um, because we are a student, or a school that's identified for, uh, improvement through OSI, or the, uh, uh, I don't know. Office School Improvement? Okay, there's two S's, though.
State's.
So, okay.
State's.
There, there wasn't gonna be a quiz, I shouldn't have done that. It was, it was my goal to not use a lot of these acronyms, um, and I, yes, I was like, dang it, shouldn't have done that. Um, and so what we, we are identified for our student group, students receiving disabilities. And so we need to make sure that we're targeted on that group. Because our multilingual groups, um, were performing just a hair over the, the threshold for identification. We're also focusing on them to make sure we don't fall back in that area. Um, and so we do it in those two areas. Our math coach is working really closely with our language development specialist to help not just Monument staff, but staff across the district to build units and lessons that are, uh, meeting the needs of those student groups. Um, because they have unique needs and they knew unique strategies. Um, and it is still new learning, the language standards that we're using. Um, we, we've had them for three years now, which doesn't sound very new, but in our realm of that, it's pretty new. Um, and so we're still learning on how to plan around those. And then the last part on there is our parent involvement. We're always looking to increase our parent involvement, always, always, always. If you notice, we had, um, our doors open tonight was our steam pumpkin painting night. Um, you guys all get to take these pumpkins home and give them a new home. Um, we, yeah, if you, no, 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 you gotta take them home. Um, it's the, it's a door gift that doesn't go away. Um. We, we've done this for, uh, five years in a row now. Originally, Calvin Bushman donated a ton of pumpkins to us. Um, lately, we've been going out to Qualis Farm out in Dodson Road, so thank you, Qualis Farm, for donating, they donated two hundred and fifty pumpkins. We had our families go out there and help pick them. Um, we had well over a hundred families represented here tonight. Um, and so it's always one of our biggest events. And, uh, we look forward to these events and others, other events that we have going on. Every Wednesday, we have Monument Movers, which is a, um, a group that, uh, Mrs. Courage put together. The first fifteen minutes of every Wednesday recess, they go out and they jog, walk or run laps, uh, for incentives. And it was done because we looked at last year's data and said, man, Wednesdays, we have a lot of behaviors, big behaviors on Wednesdays. We need to do something to get the energy out, um, get them over that hump of the Wednesday. And so we said, you know what, we're gonna, uh, offer this opportunity to get them out there and they get to walk, run, socialize. And initially, the, there was a little pushback, um, especially on the older kids, but then when we added in the incentives and the opportunity to track how much they're running, that we got more participation when they were able to track. And we have it coordinated where you do six laps, it equals one mile. We've had kids that are well over two miles after the second Wednesday. Um, and then we thought, you know what, it'd be great, what if we invited parents to come out and join them? And so that we've had, uh, each week, we've had, uh, at least four or five different families come out and walk with their, their children, um, outside. The first day we did it, the weather was terrible. Um, it was windy, like, everything was blowing away. Uh, we thought, no one's gonna come back, um, but to our, uh, happiness, they did the next week. Um, and then the other thing that we're inviting everyone to join on, uh, PBIS events, uh, parents, our parent committee asked us, can we help out with those? And we said, absolutely. So they come in and they help out at our monthly PBIS events. Um, we have a dance party coming up on the thirty-first, um, with glow sticks and costumes and everything. And so our parents are, come in, they'll help out, they'll hand out glow sticks, they are extra eyes in the gym when we do that. Um, and those are just some of the activities we got, we've already had, we have more planned, we're excited for it, and we have a parent meeting on Monday, um, that will continue to talk about that. But with that being said, we are always looking to add parents to that, always looking to increase involvement, so. Yeah. Need to get your, need to get your steps in. It's, it, it's great. We, um, the participation has just increased every week. We've done it, it's our third week. Next week will be fourth one, and, um, you know, the kids, uh, they love it, and it's, yeah, we have, on Wednesdays, our recess behaviors are actually literally half of the other days of the week, um, which is, was the intended goal, so we're excited about that. So, um, at that, that's my whole report. Um, I'm, I'm ready and willing to answer any questions that you may have in present or, uh, joining us online, so.
I like that question. I understand that we don't test our kids for dyslexia or any of the things that would impair their reading. Why?
Well, not just, you can't, not everyone is allowed to test. Um, we do, do some unofficial screeners that we, um, one of them is an online program called the Mirror, that, uh, students will read and speak into a microphone, and when there's consistent errors... And when there's consistent errors, Amira will say, hey, we see some errors that are commonly associated with dyslexia. You might wanna communicate that to the family. And then what the family then does is they can take them to someone who is certified to screen for it. And that's how we kind of flag them for that, to help out with that. Um, it's just not something that we're able to do. Um, you need a certification to do that.
But uh, we do screen, every, this third grader does get a dyslexia screen. But again, like we, it's not a formalized test. The nearest dyslexia center that I'm aware of is Spokane or Seattle. I don't know. Last time I checked, I don't think so, Washington even has one, but there's things that we can do if a child does get, you know, diagnosed with dyslexia that we can help. That we screen for it, so.
Yeah, and one of the things that Amira is great for is, you know, it tells us, hey, the, the student is displaying some characteristics associated with dyslexia. And then we can still administer what we would typically do to, to work with that and to help with that and educate that.
Can I ask, as I had, and I have discussed this with uh Nick a while ago, about there is something called an Ehrlich syndrome. That um, forty percent of the dyslexic people can be taken care of. Reading by just a colored film. That goes over the sheet because they say some kids are seeing waves, some kids are seeing. Bouncing letters and it's a calming thing first. And then it, once it calms the brain, then they say it turns it around. And I thought, wow, what a wonderful thing. And that, I know, is cheap. They can come in for X number of dollars, come in for a day, but I think they would perhaps. Need to know who has dyslexia. It's not just dyslexic people who have this issue. And I took the test myself and I, I have a green sheet in front of me, I felt instant calm. I don't really have a reading problem, there's other things. Those drive us crazy. I can't make a decision after an hour of shopping in these shops. That have those, um, I mean, I have to go home, I'm not gonna make a decision. There's all kinds of those simple little things that show that they have an issue.
Right, and yeah, and eh, thank you for bringing up because we, um, all of the schools have the capability of providing five oh four plans. And in a five oh four, you could say, like, you know, I would prefer my, my child to have, you know, one of these screens or filters. And and that's an accommodation that we would be willing to make for anybody, based on request, just like we have noise cancelling headphones readily available, you know. There's all sorts of things that we do to unique, to uh, unique, um, meet the unique needs of our students. And you know, that would be something, you don't need a doctor's note to request that, it'd just be a conversation with the parent.
It's those strategies, they're not expensive.
Right, absolutely.
See, but you said the film, then you'll see some houses that have blue color light fixtures. That tones down the, especially if it's a fluorescent lighting, the LED is a little bit better, but even with LED, it can be really.
I have, I have trees in my office that cover my lights. I don't like my lights either. A stressful day, I look at and pretend I'm outside. Any other questions? Yeah, absolutely.
You had to jump up in, in the TK number sixteen students, but I assume they must have come out from outside the boundaries, the typical boundaries of school.
Right, so our. Uh, no, when we do the TK selection process and the selection process actually starts in the spring, we open it up, parents start signing their kids up. Um, and then we have a pretty regimented um process that we go through where we weigh. All these different things, we weigh who they live with, we weigh how many working parents they have. How many siblings are in the family and so on and so forth, and it's a pretty uh hefty uh spreadsheet that we look at. Um, and then when we identify all the students that are uh, meet the guidelines. And then we start saying, okay, well, these are the ones to go, we normally go to Pioneer, Mountain View, or Monument, those are the three that we have. And then we say, okay, who's not in those groups, um, in the boundaries? And then we start placing them based on familial need, what, what is the most accessible and um. Is helpful for the families, cause we're, at the end of the day, that's really what we're, we want to do. What's that?
I assume that was helpful for them to be moved to Monument, have they been at a different school and got moved to Monument, or they're late in getting into the program?
We have a little of both, actually. Um, we have some that end up uh in another school. Um, like, you know, maybe a student's on the waitlist. And then someone leaves at Pioneer and we ask that parent, like, hey, we know you're gonna go to Monument from K to five. Um, but we have a spot open at Pioneer, would you want to take it, knowing that, you know, that's not gonna be your homeschool? And we, a lot, most, almost all the parents say yes. Um, and so, and then we just have some others, you know, unique things that pop up based on babysitting and stuff like that, so. Yeah, we, we have a pretty mixed group of when it comes to TK. And then once they get them in, my goal as a monument teacher, plug yours Manuel, once they get them here, I want them to stay until their fifth grade. So, we uh, we, I love the fact that, yeah, you know, anything uh to keep them here. And that transition, I, I can't say enough about a TK program, you know, that transition, our rock stars in kindergarten. When you sit down and go, man, this kid is meeting all the needs, they're showing amazing leadership. We had this conversation today in our building, actually, um, the kindergarten, almost all of them, you go to TK. I mean, it's, it's phenomenal, phenomenal.
I do, um, I, I'm really curious about like, how it's going related to just the. The physical infrastructure, specifically like the roadways, um. Uh, how that experience is for the families picking up, dro- dropping off. I know the city has talked about eventually putting a road to punch through. Are you involved in any, any of those conversations? And if you are, are there any updates?
You know, I haven't gotten an update since about this time last year. Um, the last conversation, last update I got was the, the big picture plan. Um, about, uh, first of all, and like installing sidewalks out here on thirteenth. Um, and then pushing uh tents all the way through and then connecting. I don't know, the street that would cross over all the way through the, um, just north of here. I, I haven't received any updates in a year. Um, I, I would love for sidewalks to be out here, although I don't want. Our students walking out there. Um, the drivers speed terribly down thirteenth. Um, they drive by two schools and they don't slow down below forty at times. Um, and so I, 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 even though I don't want our kids out there walking, um, I, I would love to see sidewalks out there for sure, so.
Yeah, they talked about repeating or slowing down?
If they have, they haven't let me know. Last time I talked to Tom Harris, our maintenance, our facilities director, um, he didn't have anything other than what he shared with me last October. I haven't actually. We get, no, so let me, I gotta categorize this, right? Do we get complaints about parent pickup? Usually, it takes a long ti- it doesn't take a long time, it takes fifteen minutes max, but our line goes all the way out to the street. Yeah, but I don't get conversations about the conditions of the road or lack of sidewalks or anything like that, so.
The last I heard that it was the road out front, the improvement service would be tagged with the Q flex. I mean, it's whenever that is completed, so. Um, that's the last I heard, and I heard about it same time as you, about a year ago. One thing I know, Dan, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, does anyone ask your question, Dan?
That was my question. I think it would be good to maybe connect with the city and just get those progress updates, cause I would say. Um, from the family's perspective, it is a deterrent for them to get to the school and they would literally. Figure out other ways to sometimes avoid enrolling in Monument because of the, that specific issue, but that was my comment, thank you.
I know we need to move on to our safety, our armor to work, but I do, one social emotional um strategy that we're using. It's making a big difference, but we wanna talk about just the student council piece that you started. Now, that's, that's really taking off and empowering kiddos.
It is, we, so, um, I, about four years ago, we started a, a student council. Um, in grades three, four, and five, we get a boy and a girl from each classroom, so we get, um. Uh, four kids in each grade, so twelve students total. Um, and our student council gets the opportunity to weigh in on what's going well, but it's not going well around the building. And then, um, they also get an opportunity to pick what we're doing for PBIS events. And so they get to plan those out, um, which they love, it's important, um, it's agency for them. Um, it's feedback that they get to see us follow up on. Um, and tonight was actually the first night that we actually invited our student council to come in and help out, uh, handing out pumpkins and doing different things like that, so. They had that opportu- opportunity uh for leadership outside of the, the school day. In the school day, they're also the ones that go around and tell the, the other students and explain these different events. They get the opportunity to uh talk to their class about what they want seen addressed in the student council. And then I get the, the report from that, and so, um, you know, one of the topics, uh, popular ones is how students are acting in the cafeteria. And it's funny, cause the, you ask students, well, what should we do about this? And they are so much more harsh than we ever would be, and they're like, kick them out, and we're like, well, well, you know. Eh, you know, just because they have poor manners, um, eh, but.
Are they, is it the same students for a period of time?
Eh, that we have semesters, we have two, two groups, yeah, and so, um. And initially, we, you know, we don't vote on them, eh, we don't want it to become a popularity contest. We really wanna highlight some of those students that normally wouldn't want to um get voted on, just because they're, you know, um, they have silent leadership skills. We wanna help them, support them. Um, and so we get uh kind of a combination of teacher, uh. Uh nominated and student self-nominated, so if a student nominates himself, we, we listen to it, so. It's great, yeah, love it. Alright, well, thank you guys, and I'll uh seed the floor to DJ.
Before DJ gets started, can I, sorry, meant to tack this on to Diana's, can I say one thing? Sorry, um, so on, on the same thing Diana's talking about, I regularly walk the path between the southwest side and, and Monument. And if we're gonna pressure the city about trying to improve the conditions on the road, can we also try to. Put out the word that people need to pick up after their pets. I don't know if the community's ever seen kids walk to the school, but they are not following just the paved path and it is. There are stuff everywhere out there between the, the two avenues in the school. And it's quite frankly embarrassing that our kids have to walk by all that.
Chad, I just want you to know, every day in my house, since I say please walk on the walking path.
Thanks, Phil, I appreciate that. I, it's not your problem, it's, it's a community thing and it, it's just. Every time I walk through there, I, I'm just embarrassed that the kids have to walk by all that, so.
You didn't mention anything about the combines that they have to. Alright, good to know, thank you, Chad.
Alright, so today we're gonna go over the emergency preparedness and what QSD is doing for. To plan for emergency events or situations. And we're gonna start with the QSD safety and security measures. Oh, do you guys want some time to turn around and see it? I know it's set up behind you here. So we follow the ICS Incident Command System, really is a standardized management tool for meeting the demands of all small or large emergencies. Or non-emergency situations. Uh, it really represents the best practices and has become the standard for emergency management across the country. All drills are initiated by the school incident command system team at every building, just for uh our emergency drills that we run monthly. The incident command system example would be uh bus accident. The incident commander superintendent would initiate the ICS response, district admin would then uh report to the scene of the accident. Simultaneously, the district then re- the reunification team is dispatched to uh Quincy Valley Medical Center. Uh, and then the district office communicates to parents, staff, media through, uh, throughout the day via remind and just giving an update uh on the situation. And then once student reunification is complete, the district recovery team is then initiated as the wraparound service. These are the different drills that we do uh monthly throughout our district. We have evacuation, secure the building, secure the building is the threat on the outside of the building. And then lockdown is inside threats. Then we have the shelter in place, uh, and all drills again are initiated in the incident command system or ICS. And we take that very seriously, we go through the drill, uh, our. Our teams in our buildings are documenting what's happening, then we have a. A spreadsheet that they go through and examine what was, what went well, what could be improved on. They, they get together as a team to debrief every drill that we do in our buildings. And then all staff are trained throughout the year regarding uh our school emergency procedures.
DJ, can I add one thing to that? We might have some other side, but lockdown, our secondary schools started last year as doing them, non-structure times. So in passing periods, uh, we started calling lockdowns, cause when we view, there is an active shoot snare. Rarely is when other kids are, are, if that does occur, it's not when kids are in classes in those unstructured periods. Uh, so that's what we have been starting to drill on.
So we have a uh schedule, a drill scheduled throughout the year, these are come, are OSPI uh recommendations and we follow them. So each month you can, uh. You know exactly what drills are gonna be happening throughout the buildings, and they do a calendar event. Uh, that goes through, uh, throughout the QSD admin team, so everybody understands who's running the drills at what time. Uh, so we go through the evacuation drills for September, October, November's lockdown drill, December, secure the building, and then we go back to lockdown. And shelter in place, secure the building, and then uh finishing up with evacuation drills at the end. We tried to do these evacuation drills during the warmer months, cause I have, uh, as a principal, I. Uh, called one of those in the middle of December, it was not good, so did not end well. Yeah, and, and again, I want, I, to next point, we actually, some of those lockdown drills, we are trying to get those as realistic as possible. Cause we wanna try to find gaps in our security or in our system. Uh, so we'll do them during a passive period or during lunchtime and just to see the reaction and what we have to prepare for. Teachers do know when those are coming, it's not the adults, the students are the ones who are, may not know, but the, the teachers are given a, a little bit of notice. Uh, drills to date, so eleven evacuation drills that we have. Again, we're in the start of the school year, so all eight sites uh performed uh evacuation drills. Uh, in September, and we have three so far for this month, uh, so we have eleven. By the end of this year, though, there'll be a total of eighty throughout our district. The QSD District Crisis Team, this is the team that really is developing and implementing comprehensive safety plan. Throughout the district, uh, and I cannot say enough about our team. And actually coming into Quincy, I've never been in a district that had such a well thought out and planned uh comprehensive uh emergency plan. We actually have been recognized from uh Grant County Emergency, they have taken our plan and taken it to other districts because it's so uh well done. On this team, I do wanna highlight each and every one of them because uh it's a really important part. Their leadership uh throughout this meeting is, is critical on making decisions for our district. Tom Harris, um, Sean Fuller, Mr. Ramsey, David Day, uh Kurt Schutzman. Manny Ramos, Alicia Porter, Gus Winter, eh, we do have the QPD chief, Rand Green, the SRO, Jessica Diaz. Our uh new SSO, Sal Mancini, and then our fire chief, uh Tony. So each one of those uh team members really represents a sector that can give us insight in what we need to do. Or how we're gonna prepare for emergency plans. It's really cool to go through and everyone's thinking everything's fine. And then the fire chief will say, hey, that, that door has to be locked, or no, we need access during an emergency to this door. And then we'll brainstorm and then prepare and kind of tweak our system based on their input, so. Uh, we, the district team, crisis team uh meets monthly. And we have implemented a building walkthrough component to the meeting, so we were meeting monthly and going through an agenda. But it was really critical to, when we had principals kind of share out, or the team to go visibly see that. So what we started doing last year is going on site, and then the first half hour is when we do a walkthrough of the building. Trying to find gaps or, you know, security needs based on principal recommendation. Now the whole team can say, yeah, we need a key fob right there, or we need access to this, or we need a gate here. Uh, one simple one was, there was a tree, a pine tree that was covering uh a camera, and the whole team said, why is that tree there? We don't know, who installed the camera behind the tree? So something simple like that, we knocked down the tree, and then now we have visibility in a corner that was at one point, you know, uh. Could, could be a safety hazard, so. We've implemented, uh, or excuse me, we have done a tabletop reunification drill, we conducted that last year. And now we're working on logistics for re- uh reenactment drill for this school year. It's really important to us to not only talk about this, but really kind of go through the motions. And we're gonna reach out to emergency, Grant County Emergency Team to try to kind of facilitate that. It will take some planning. And we're gonna reach out to emergency, Grant County Emergency Team to try to kinda facilitate that, it will take some planning, we're gonna have. We're gonna stage uh some folks, we're gonna invite some parents and students to be able to go through this reunification and. We're hoping uh by the springtime, we'll have something concrete to share with you guys and and go through that, so. And then again, all safety and security topics run through this team.
July, so we'll do a practice run this year on the old hospital, interesting.
Yeah, we're gonna, I should, I will put that in the agenda to discuss.
Dan just had one question.
Okay.
Team member defined roles.
Well, we represent, as far as the roles uh for the team, we're just trying to uh get representation from different sectors of the community. Like I said, Fire Chief, uh Q P D, we have an S R O, S S O, we have principals, like I mentioned, then we have. Facilities Director, Tech Director, and so we're getting representation throughout, but as far as that. Timekeeper or somebody doing the agenda or doing those things, not necessarily, no. Yes, if if he's, if he's suggesting roles in the emergency, yes, all of that is laid out. Uh throughout the building, our building teams have roles, our emergency management teams have roles within the building. And then even our reunification, everybody knows where they're supposed to go at that time, yeah. And they're trained on that, that goes back to the building and then they go through uh a training in in the first, within the first two weeks. In order to make sure everybody understands a role within that team. So here's our uh S R O, J- uh Officer Jessica Diaz. Uh she's been a great asset, we we uh she came on board last year as a second S R O. Unfortunately, our uh second, uh the other S R O that we had, um Abe Guzman, he has now moved on to. Eastmont. East Wenatchee, uh yeah, East Wenatchee, yep, E- Eastmont, oh Police Department, so East Wenatchee, yep. Um and but we're happy to report that Jessica Diaz is here and staying on board and we are extremely excited that. Throughout that process, we really vetted and identified a gap last year and uh needing a a extra security, an S S O. Uh over at the middle school and so we brought on board.
And if you have Instagram, I wanna put a plug for Jessica's, she's on her Instagram page and it's specific to her S R S uh our S R O role. On what she does, her safety tips, shows how she's interacting with kids, it's a really cool, under the hood look at what our S R Os are doing on a daily basis. With our kids, so if you have Instagram, you should follow her.
And so during that process, like I said, we identified a a gap, we were in need of a security officer or S S O. Sa- School Safety Officer, uh we went through the vetting process with our crisis team, we then went through um. Uh two to three week process or two, three meetings, so it was about three months. Of trying to find, identifying the gap and then finding how we were going to fill that need. Uh we then looked at our surrounding regions uh to try to get a uh job description, roles and responsibilities for that individual. We ended up presenting that to the board last year and then we hired uh Sal Mancini. He was a former S R O at the high school, so it really was a good fit, he's still commissioned officer, he retired from Q P D. And now uh has been a really, really, really strong asset there at the at the middle school, building relationships. Helping Mister Ramsey and the admin team uh doing investigations and just being a presence in the hallway, uh it it, we can't say enough about him either. We do have in our district a threat assessment, um a student threat assessment uh protocol or procedure. And really, it's if a student uh makes a threat in any way, it could be a social media that threat, it could be. Uh one on one or to a group or even uh coming on campus with with some kind of weapon. We will then go through a procedure of a threat assessment, it's a formal procedure to determine the level of threat that student poses. Long are the, long gone are the days where um if a student says, oh, I'm gonna. I'm gonna shoot you or I'm gonna beat you up, we we then have to take that seriously and implement this procedure. Uh with our building administrators and then try to figure out the level of threat, we have three threat, uh three levels to threat assessment. Level one, level two, level three, or it's not a threat, uh the student spoke out of anger and and misspoke or whatever. But we still have to go through the process and that has been tough, it's been a change over the last two or three years for parents to understand, they have been supported, but it is very intense. Experience for parents, for students and for at administration team because. Uh something that says, hey, I was just joking, we we still have to take that serious and uh go through that process and it it does take a lot of time and effort. Each building has received training in the threat assessment protocol and processed with the support of North Central E S D. And the North Central E S D also has a threat assessment team to assess a student's threat level. When they have, when we determine or our building team determines that the student is a threat and has it rises to the level two or level three. Then there is an outside agency that can come in and and perform another threat assessment and kinda help guide us through that process.
And unfortunately, we've been using threat assessments all the way down to T K, all the way through, so. With uh the shooting in Virginia where Kinnaird shot his teacher, we now take every single threat. You know, absolutely serious and and it we feel that we need run through a assessment, we we go through this protocol, so. It is a research-based, one of the the most uh empirically based uh prevention strategies that we use. To defend school lands and every single administrator, you know, our elementary school administrators are train, are trained in this and conduct. But assessments on students, just to make sure we're keeping our spaces safe.
Uh as far as safety and security at the district level, we do have an emergency notification system in FormaCast, so all schools and. Uh the district office are on this system, has intercom, a call, text, connect sequence, uh police department. We have two hundred and sixty-one security cameras on our campuses. Which is by far so the most uh security cameras that. I have ever heard of from any district in Eastern Washington at least, or in our area. Um and I thanks to Sean uh Fuller and his team to maintain those, make sure that there's visibility. They have recordings for up to thirty days, uh the capacity that we can hold, so we can go back and monitor those cameras, um so they really do. What's that? Yes, they are, yes, ma'am. No, this does not, but they have, they have cameras on, but that is a separate, yep. Yep, yep. So do not, do not try to go around or pass them. We will find you. We will find you. Uh we do have biweekly camera checks to enforce function and ensure functionality and and uptime. Monthly maintenance and crisis team walks, we have digital hand handheld radios district wide, I don't know the the number, but there's quite a few of those too. Um, yep, and then we're enrolled in the uh P T S for emergency calls, Priority Telecommunication Services. Uh we are a single point entries with secure uh vegetables, so we have card readers and every entry. And every building in our district is a single point entry, um it's really important to us because we can't allow. Anybody to come in on to our campuses without be, without identifying themselves first and foremost. And so this, they, we've worked really hard over the last two years to spend the money, make sure that maintenance and tech are communicating and trying to install these. At every uh location, every building.
And one more thing before we jump into this, uh our main department, they check exterior doors and not just if they're. Close, that functionality of the exterior doors to make sure that they're all looking properly, if they're not, they're repaired immediately. Then they also do a interior check of all classroom doors to make sure uh six twelve doors will be locked and closed at all times. Gate five, they are supposed to be locked with a magnet strip so it can easily shut to be closed. But the team right now, we are debating whether or not at the gate five, oh, then we go lock all the time as well. And that's the single, uh to date, no school shooters has breached a locked door. Um and I mean, it's a strategy of boy with zero dollars.
So safety and security and and our communication, so if a threat is made to any school or building, a team is assembled. Uh consisting of the building leader, usually the building principal that is of the school that that threat is coming to. Uh superintendent, assistant superintendent, communications coordinator, and so that we can properly communicate about to the threat to our stakeholders. Uh we wanna make sure that we are being transparent and letting everybody know what the situation is. Our communication about a threat is set as soon as possible in the following order, uh we do building staff by building administrator via email. And we go through all Q S D staff and that comes from our superintendent. And then we do uh building parents via remind, um and then communication is posted on the building web or. The building website and on the Q S D mobile app. It's really important to communicate all of this out because as soon as there's a stakeholder group that did not get informed, it does cause panic. So we've worked really hard to work with our communications uh around safety and security. Last year, we did have a tagging that went on to the high school. And so in order to uh get all of that information out, it does take a team, Nick and Jessica were up. You know, at six thirty in the morning, working with Q P D and we're trying to get that communication out and making sure that we had everything on point to. One, to see if it was a viable threat and two, to make sure that the community knew about it.
One thing that he's new this year that we're experiencing um is that FBI is working with social media companies through A I.
Yep.
Uh examining posts that might contain any kind of threats uh against a school. So the the one experience that we had, it wasn't threatening the the school, but FBI can do that anyway. But that still gave us, you know, this front was looking on it at between the morning to determine that it wasn't, it wasn't a threat, it wasn't even in the context of a threat. But it picked up those keywords, so A I is, we're gonna see safety and security enhancements, that's the first example that I've experienced.
Yeah. But. It was phenomenal, we, I got a call at five thirty in the morning from uh Jessica letting me know and then they were already at the school. At seven thirty and and devising a plan and it did, we, as they investigated further, it was not a viable threat. But just to know that they got flagged was remarkable, so. We do have the vector, that's okay. Is that right? So you're just letting me think I was doing that. You are amazing, you are amazing, just keep it going, smiling wave, oh my gosh. Uh so the vector alert system that we have. Uh vector alert system that we have allows students, families, anybody in the community, community can actually uh report. Any kind of uh situation or uh intimidation and bullying, an active threat against the school. Any safety concern that they may have, we have this this system, they go through, they can go through a website, phone, email or text app. And they are posted throughout the high school uh with a Q R code in order to do that as well.
It is in our welcome back guide, the whole app, in game guide as well, and then we have not right reminded out to parents this year, we could. But um and past we put on social media.
Yes, she did this year too. Yeah, she did this year again, mm-hmm. But if, but that does, that shows a gap, if there is somebody that doesn't know, we could do it again, it's not, not hard, yeah. Anyway, these these reports are routed to the district and to the buildings and then they're tracked by the building administrators and it actually goes through kind of a workflow. Where it was reported, everybody sees it, and then they can go investigate and the person, the administrator could then click on there and say, yep. Uh it's active, an active investigation, then once you've completed the investigation or gone through and taken care of it. Then they can go through and say it's closed and it just spits out that remind going through.
The first is last year and then this year, just to show there's not a lot of difference.
Okay, so here's our Fall twenty-three student perception survey, so it's really important to understand or survey our students to see. Are all of these things making them feel safer? I think the perception is key, especially when we're talking about safety and security. Uh because we can put all of these measures in place and the security systems uh in place and students may or may not feel that. And so how do we take this information and use it so that we can help clear that up? Uh last year, we had. Um uh elementary survey for four or five was not, uh twenty-seven percent, almost never thought, well, here is a question, what would make. How often do you worry about violence in your school? Twenty-seven percent and twenty-four percent were in the green, so we usually combine those, but really is almost never, it's twenty-seven percent. Once in a while is twenty-four and then uh sometimes it's twenty-three. There are, there was fifteen percent that said almost always, and so that is a little bit concerning. Uh but it's still really, the majority of our kids do feel safe, this was last year's, again, we had thirty-four percent for secondary. Twenty-nine percent once in a while and twenty-five percent, sometimes with almost always was at four percent, so even better, and that was a group of about five hundred students. Or, excuse me, more than that.
With the fourth or grades four and five, is that, I mean, pretty common across? All the different buildings or there are differences or just kinda too small in numbers once you.
We can pull up by building and and they've done, they've done a little bit of looking at it, but we're gonna actually do a. Uh later on in the board cycle, we'll be digging into this survey data a little bit more, like of all of the pieces, not just the school safety. So at that time, we could look to that level if we would like to.
And this is, that was last year, so now here, this year, we did have, how often do you worry about uh violence in your school and. My, the first thing that I went to was thirty-two, twenty-one, twenty-one, but really, if you look at the almost always, it was twelve percent, so we did improve. From last year to this year and how those kiddos are feeling, fourth and fifth graders do feel safer in their perception data. And I do wanna make a plug, even though they say sometimes or even frequently. There is something to be said where with the media today, the way in our day and age, there's just an overall concern, I mean. Even my own kids, they, are you guys afraid to go to school, it's like, do you think about this? Yeah, well, we're thinking about it because people are talking about it and I think that just resonates as far as uh when students start. Talking about what their fear is and they get groups of students, it's not necessarily that they're scared, but because it's out in the media, because they're having conversations about it. They are thinking about it and that's okay, we're not saying that that's a bad thing that they sometimes are thinking about this or frequently uh thinking about this.
I'm not sure why the secondary box isn't showing, but I have it on the.
Is it on yours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um and one small, do you want me to just?
Yeah.
Um one small.
Holly is in charge of sending this out and and.
Sorry, um one thing about the secondary um survey data, there's just a little bit bump up. Um in the thinking more about violence in secondary, however, I just wanna mention that unintentionally. The the week we gave the survey lined up with the week that Hesus though, Melissa came to talk about um school shootings and so it was very much on. Everyone's mind right when they were taking that survey at secondary and that may have skewed that a little bit.
We'll see this.
Yeah, we'll see, because we take it different times, so.
We do have a writing question, uh what would make you feel safer and it was very similar to last year's, the top. Um the top four comments that came out are the the themes were police officers, nothing and we're safe now.
Most, just lots and lots of kids saying, nothing, I already feel safe, I already feel safe, the one thing that was just a tiny bit. Not an overall theme, but a few more comments about this year was a few students commented about, um it would make them feel safer if they could have their phone all the time.
That might be a direct result of the, what we implemented.
And yeah, I'll also go back to the Pacers thing, this just bumped up a little bit, but we explained, my son and I were at a gorge concert together, I told the story earlier, but. Uh the first thing, we got someone in, the most beautiful venue in the entire world, sun setting. And he asked, what do we do if there's a, if there's an act of shooting? That was one of the very first questions he asked, you know, we're not at school or it it's, it's everywhere and, you know, luckily. He hasn't been trained by his students, he bits training every year, we don't call it an assembly, we're trying to get away from calling it assembly, it's a student train. He's a, he's trained, so he, you know, I said, what would we do? And he had a plan, the shooter was close to us, what we would do, he had a plan, if the shooting was coming from another direction and it wasn't that he was scared, paranoid. He knew how to potentially survive if an incident did happen at the gorge at the theater and it's. Breaks my heart to know that the societal issues we're facing, that we have to have these conversations, that my son has a plumber. Uh at a, at the most beautiful venue in the world, um. And one of the safest. Um, one of the safest, and one of the safest, it is very safe there, uh, in the venue. And uh, but that, that is reality. So I think it is important to empower kiddos. Uh, through the training over the year and it does make it, it makes a substantial difference.
So it must have been when I was clicking through or that clicker, but we do have a, a slide here that. Jesus has come, he's nationally recognized active shooter, uh, expert. Uh, he did get to uh, be with the secondary students and staff October second and October third of this year. So all of the students are trained this year again. K twelve parent presentation was held on October third. And then he actually helped um, the crisis team with his guidance and feedback, create our, the emergency plan that we have now. So he's been a, a huge component in our emergency plan throughout the years. All right, so just to wrap up, K five student supports that are in place, we have monthly emergency drills. Uh, incident command teams at each building, we have parent notification drills sent via remind, we have the vector alert system. P B I S and M T S S teams as support, we have resource officers available, social workers, mental health counselors. Uh, we do a lot of conflict management training for counselors and teachers focused on preventative measures. And uh, we have, we have designated cell instruction using the Sanford Harmony and Second Steps and Council's Choice. In order to help students make better choices while they're in that conflict resolution. Uh, six, eight student supports that are in place, we have P T A, uh, P A, or PAX, individual parent meetings and phone calls. Uh, we also have P B I S and M T S S teams there, administrators are visible, available, we have success rooms available for students. And we have the threat assessment protocol. And for nine, twelve, a lot of the same, but we do have, uh, what we see more here is we have a calming room in the high school. We have responsive and consistent discipline. Uh, we have social media monitoring and student intervention specialists that they can go to and access uh, throughout the, throughout their uh, day. And then we ha, we also have cell and academic check-ins with all teachers on Mondays. That's the safety and security report. Do you guys have any questions for, for me about any of that? All right. Thank you, guys.
You can turn the clicker off now.
All right, equity and action.
So the, the next two are written for. So you can review those, you can ask for feedback. Um, Dan, I got your question about being in, you just kind of wrapped all those dates out and you should have got some outlook invites to those.
No, I didn't, uh, unless it was emailed to me, but I don't think they've come through.
Okay, I'll double, I'll circle back with Alison. I, I know that was on her to do list. Equity and Action, uh, work this year. We're really focusing on. People who need student growth goals that are new to the future evaluation, you're welcome to attend another work, this is not the agenda, that's starting as a dual language work group. So if you're interested in learning about dual language, coming back to the district, there'll be two meetings. Informationally, it's really just understanding what it is, the various types of programs. So the board's interested in either of those, Equity and Action. Um, can't have three there, but we can have two, uh, either of those working communities that we know.
I did have a question about the transportation report. Is it okay to go there? Um, I was just curious if, um. I know, like, for teachers, for students, there's climate surveys. Has anything like that been done for uh, bus drivers specifically? Just recognizing um, the staffing shortage. I'd, I'd be really curious to know, um, maybe what are some factors related to? Helping support that specific program.
Yeah, we are working on the possibility of developing a climate survey with our P S E members, which would include bus drivers this year, Dan. If we, if we did do it, the group, uh, you would give it this, uh, this spring.
And who, what, what positions fall under that category? Sorry.
It's bus drivers, cooks, maintenance, custodians, parent educators, our classified staff.
That's great. Um, does that include coaches?
There's not with coaches, no.
Are there climate surveys for those extracurricular activities?
We don't have one developed, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, sound, I, you know, I know you've done a lot of surveying. It sounds like, hey, let's just do a survey, but to get a really good, reliable, valid survey is pretty tricky to put together. Um, but I know, uh, P S E has some examples that they would like to use and it really does need to be member driven. So we're working with them on that.
Yeah, I, I, I'd be willing to explore and help support the other programs as well. But yeah, thank you. That's my question.
And that bus driver, if we found the magic sauce of that, that'd be awesome. We can make a lot of money off of that, send it back to other districts. I'll do, uh. Get more drivers, because every district is, is, it's a really. Tough spot right now and I, you know, really want to applaud Rob for the work that he's doing to get the drivers. We have one right now that is just finishing up and we have two more have started training. And then we have additional drivers coming off of leave, some knock on wood, coming into winter, we should be in a pretty good spot. Is that a fair statement, Rob?
Yes, yes.
Until two more go out.
Our, our numbers.
Yes, our numbers are up.
Your bus riding numbers?
I was fourteen thirty-three and I'm just good the fall and we're at fourteen ninety.
Wow, I can barely get four children to places.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. What's next? Superintendent report.
All right, first off, Casey, welcome to board. We're excited to have you. Uh, it's gonna be great. Secondly, thank you so much, F F A boosters. We just approved over, the board just approved over a hundred thousand dollar donation, which includes a new truck for our, our F F A program. And computers, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just the support of our F F A boosters is, it's unbelievable. It's so inspiring and. So impactful to our students. It's our biggest club in our high school. We're three hundred kids and F F A. Boosters, your, your mission to make sure that every student that wants to participate can. And not just participate, participate at the highest level. Uh, it's just amazing and that donation is a direct reflection of that. So I just can't thank you enough, Calvin, uh, for that. So, thank you. Um, A I Summit, Sean, Camille Jones, myself, uh, and Susan Rose, we presented on just have our A I in Germany. And you'll be getting the condensed version, it was a ninety-minute presentation. You will not be getting the full ninety. Uh, but you know, A I is something that we have to lean into. Uh, it's one of those applications that you can't wish it away or think it's going to go away. It's going to be more and more prevalent. So it's important that we're thinking deeply about it, we're thinking critically about it. Uh, and, and we're making sure that our eyes are wide open as we enter, uh, our students aid using A I, our teachers using A I. And there's also a lot of possib, possibilities that can come out of A I, but there's also a lot of caution and danger too. So we are, uh, eyes wide open, but um, we are excited to share that. It was a great conference. Uh, it was over three hundred, uh, people were there and the presentation went fairly well. It's always nice, Sean, to get out there and. And show off his tech skills in front of the room, about seventy people. So Sean did a great job. Uh, White Hatter is taking place at the middle school tonight. Uh, it's an online, uh, safety training. Uh, for our, our families to help develop digital safety habits. Uh, so our parents are, that's just started at six thirty. Six o'clock, six o'clock. So that's going on right now. Thank you, middle school, for bringing that to our families. Uh, comprehensive social health information, I just take place at six thirty, that's taking, uh, right now. The families that can attend, we have curriculum in every single one of our schools if they'd like to check out. We also text the opt-out form to families as well, as well, if they would like to opt out. Um, we try to be as tran, transparent as possible. Last year, we had, uh. Two people, two individuals come from outside districts to come in because their districts didn't offer something to. To learn about what we're doing so they can go ask those questions in their district. So Alison works really hard to pull it off. I'm really proud of the transparency that we have around this very important topic to our families. Q C curriculum library has been put together and will be ready by October thirty-first, so if families would like to, uh, check out. Various curriculum or review materials, they can make an appointment. It is going to be housed at the district office. We've been going back and forth. We've found some room at the district office for it. Um, and we're open to floor theory, so they can make an appointment. They could either review it there at the district office, create a space. Or they could check it out and take it home. So either way, uh, that works. We're more than happy to do that. And just a reminder for families, they can review any core content, curricula on their child's Chromebook. So math, science, social studies, um. E L A, thank you, is all available on your child's Chromebook. So if you go and see what is, what are the lessons that they're giving, six twelve especially, through their Google classroom. Um, so it really has never been easier to see, uh, what your child is experiencing in the public school system. So we're excited to talk with that to our families. Um, amazing opportunity. Sarge, uh, is it Hoover? Hoover, thank you. Music Festival is taking place October twenty-fourth. I'll make sure you guys have invitation. Starts at seven o'clock. Over four hundred students off from elementary through high school will be showcasing, um, their talents. It's a regional music festival, the first time we've ever hosted this level of, of music, uh, festival.
Is it a festival that has happened in other places or is this like?
Yes.
Years, decades.
It, it, it rotates each school district. Oh, I missed the first time that we've ever been at a spot. Usually where, where we can have something that this prestige. So our music teachers have been working incredibly hard to put this on, high school administration has been working hard. Um, to bring four hundred regional students to have an honor band on our choir, um, experiencing. So we're very proud of that. All they practicing, they practice together, uh, and then I think they put on a performance. So you bring in musicians that I've never, they might have seen the pieces prior to the festival, generally they do, but then they come together. And play, uh, it's, and it's, I'm, as someone who's experienced an honor band, I'm like myself. The pieces that they give you too, it's, it's, you look at it like, no way am I going to be able to play this. It is so challenging. And by the end of your experience, you play these highly complex, really fun pieces, um, so.
With hundreds of.
With hundreds of kids you never know from around the region. So, uh, just really proud of Quincy School District, uh, Music Department, that, that we're positioned to host something like this.
Right.
So I'm really proud of that. And then just lots of conference, we're ready to go. Everyone's registered, pre-conferences are set and it's gonna be a great time. So that is my report.
Uh, student board, ready to go?
Oh, well, at the high school, the mission, we like to be class for having the training and they're very, like, close to come and join us. And you basically, we basically just talk about like ways that we can like be more inclusive to people and like bring more people to like. I guess to come to events, like participating in spirit meets and all stuff like that. And then at then, then in the four years of member first.
Some upcoming events we're gonna have soon. Um, today we had under meetings in the high school, Mr. Condo helped set those up, which was very helpful.
Introduce for what?
Um, which is like random, he didn't even like. They were fun. You were like. Um, conferences are coming up, so a bunch of kids are starting to look on their assignments. Grades will be due on, when the quarter. Um, fall scores are ending and which is towards part thirty-two, so that will be exciting.
For leadership report, Chad, Dan, do you guys have anything?
No.
Yes. Okay, policy review and adoption, the first reading and adoption review, summary and touch notes. Uh, this is just for a review status, but I can see in the notes from Dana that she has a suggestion on there. Dana, do you want to go over that or do you want me to read it off or do you want it to make note that it was mentioned in?
I, I don't, I don't mind bringing it up. Um, I have a computer in front of me thankfully, it's got it up. Um, yeah, so this is for the first reading specifically related to policy three, two, four, five. It, it, it's a pretty standard policy. I just had a recommendation, um, to add language, uh, specifically. And I don't mind reading it out loud, um, and I don't know if you want to pull it up so people can follow along, but. Here's what I'm proposing, procedures for addressing student behavior such as phone use should prioritize non punitive approaches. That encourage responsible usage and provide education rather than imposing financial. Or disciplinary penalties that disproportionately impacts certain student groups. Strategies that incur costs must provide equitable alternatives for, or financial assistance for students unable to afford the associated expenses. And that is specifically related to some of the procedures at the building level. Um, specifically with the middle school, I, I do have concerns about the, the strategy of using yonder pouches. Um, just recognizing that there is a stipulation that if the youth. Who are assigned, which everyone will be assigned, I think it was thirty-five dollars per pouch. If they lose it, they're going to have to pay for that. Um, I could just see that being a potential issue for, for some students. Um, but other than that, it was more of an equity issue and just wanted to throw it in as consideration for the board.
Other procedure, it could be the procedure.
I, I'm recommending policy at the district level, because then it will just cover all the buildings at that point.
I would have to cross-reference Dan, if that's the policies, we do have a fines policy and procedure, so I would have to cross-reference that.
Um, sorry, I don't understand that. One more time.
So we, we have a board procedure that involved, that covers student fines. So I would just have to do, I, I think, I think you have a great suggestion. We, I would just have to cross-reference that.
As in, like, this would reference that policy?
Uh, your suggestion about how we would forgive certain fines or how we think about fines. I'm not, I just need to make sure you're not suggesting that we get rid of all fines, just with this particular.
So the wording just might need to be modified so that's applicable just to the new cell phone policy and not necessarily to whatever other situations students are caught.
Yeah, I understand that. Um, but definitely prioritizing this non punitive approach. Uh, I think it's important to provide education. Otherwise, it's just going to be a power dynamic struggle and it's concerning. Um, the other recommendation. Just to consider since procedure really is at the building level, is just elementary schools using eye watches. It's not common. Um, so maybe changing that to smartwatches or similar devices.
Yeah, smartwatch, that, that, it should be listed smartwatch. Yeah, and going back to the, uh, fine conversation, Dana, I really appreciate your sentiment. I think that is really important. We've, we've taken that approach with everything that we've given out, even Chromebooks. We've, we've had students lose. Multiple Chromebooks without being fined. It is, it really is, we try to educate, we try to, you know, harness those positive behavior intervention strategies. Before we have, and, uh, enter a fine. So maybe that's something that we can talk about and how that we build that out. Um, in either the policy or procedure language. So just give us a little bit of time to work on that.
Okay, thank you.
So that one's for review, but then on the second reading and adoption summary notes for the policy. That is a passion, I think. So for forty-one, three, zero, P, did, uh, Chad and I have any comments on them, please, on that one that we're gonna approve or not?
I don't.
I don't either, so.
Uh, I need a motion to adopt the second, the policy, the revision summary note.
All motion?
All second.
Have a lo, a motion and a second. If all those in favor?
Hi.
We've adopted that one. Um, unfinished business, we have none, and new business we have done, um, there's the attachment for the board request for future topics. I haven't looked at that.
There's not any of it.
No, I'll take on that. For signatures for official documents. Think we get the adjournments.
You can't, you're, you're calling.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.